City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Logan.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Reed and Mayor Collins are excused this evening.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the city of Helena's City Commission meeting. We're pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's efforts to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary during the meeting and please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage in your participation. Would you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so the minutes for the administrative meeting of February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and February, the regular meeting of February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five have been submitted. Are there any errors, alterations, corrections, discussion? Okay, they'll stand as read. Board and committee update, we have a board appointment recommended by the mayor to the City County Parks Board. The appointment of Michael Higgins to a first term on the City County Parks Board is a Helena School District Representative. The term does not expire. Is there any discussion? Any public comment on this item? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, or is that, is that the correct nomenclature? Thank you. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move to, to approve the appointment of Michael Higgins to the first term on the City County Parks Board as a Helena School District Representative. Term does not expire.
Second.
We have a, a motion readily moved and accepted, or seconded, Ms. Claiborne.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Logan.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Next item is the consent agenda. Items, claims, and a consideration of an extension of the Shopko Minor Subdivision preliminary plat from March twenty twenty-five to March twenty twenty-eight as shown on certificate of survey three one seven one seven three two. I'd entertain one motion unless someone wants to pull one of those items for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to make a motion, please.
Certainly.
I move to approve consent item A and B.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Claiborne.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Logan.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Next up is a bid award. Transportation Systems Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Six ADA Ramp Project, and it looks like we have Director Knopki here to present.
Good ma- good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. This is our annual ADA Ramp Project. It coincides with our annual mill and overlay, and it also accomplishes, builds ramps in other areas of the city as well. Our mill and overlay coming this summer is going to be along Eleventh, starting there at Fee, and going down around the corner past California there, continuing out Colonial all the way out to basically Hunter's Point there. That'll be one section of the mill and overlay, and then the other section will be over on Henderson from Hudson, which is just south of the railroad tracks all the way up to Euclid. We'll do a, we'll do the mill there, and then our, our staff will go in and do the overlay with city staff. There's other locations that we use this money to build ramps throughout the city, but those are the main areas this time. So without any, if there's any questions, I'd move, recommend approval of the award of the fiscal year Twenty Twenty-Five ADA Ramp Program Contract to the contractor all around construction for the amount not to exceed the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Director. Any commission discussion questions on this item? Is there any public comment? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would move to award the FY Twenty Twenty-Five ADA Ramp Program Contract to the contractor all around construction for the not to exceed amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
There's been a motion moved and seconded to approve the Transportation Systems FY Twenty-Six ADA Ramp Project. Ms. Claiborne.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Logan.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Well, Commissioners, any proposals, anything you'd like to discuss? Seeing none, we'll move on to the report of the city attorney. Ms. Doctor.
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, I have nothing to report. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Burton, the report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. I did want to briefly report on the upcoming Hundred and First Vigilante Parade, and, you know, I've had several conversations with our public safety people over the last couple of years about the size of the parade, the semi trucks, the fact that the fences are right next to the wheels, and just very serious public safety concerns from fire and police and, and our street department, our permitting events people. And we have been in discussions and reviewing options to modify those safety concerns or lessen those safety concerns by modifying the route of the parade this year. We're in the process of working out the details on a parade permit, and we have about three or four large parades a year, and so what we're talking about is, is just the parades themselves, not the other activities that take place on the walking mall. But I'm very seriously considering a permit that modifies the route of the parade from, from the walking mall to, to Cruz Avenue and working the parade that way. Like I say, we've been engaged in working through details with the school district, and of course, modifying this route does not come at the request of the school district. The considerations I'm taking into play are public safety related and from our public safety experts, and so I just want you to know that those conversations are taking place in the future. What we're, what we're wanting to work up for commission consideration is like three parade routes. If you want to have a parade in Helena, there's Parade Route One, Parade Route Two, and Parade Route Three, which has all the public safety issues identified, and you can look at your event and say this one best fits our needs. And so in the future, we're going to bring for commission consideration those three parade route options. So with that, Mayor Pro Tem, if you have any questions, I'd certainly be willing to entertain them.
Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Commissioner Dean.
So, question for city manager Burton, so we're, we will get another opportunity to have a discussion at a public meeting where we can evaluate these options and some of the pros and cons in terms of improved safety or potential drawbacks. Is that accurate?
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Dean, yes, that is accurate. With the three parade route options, we would outline the work that we've done and the options that exist at an administrative meeting and take feedback from the commission, but we would want to bring it forward at a commission meeting. The upcoming Vigilante Parade is more of a administrative action. The commission has me sign off on the permits, and that's the process that we're discussing right now. So I want, want you to know that the parade's going to take place at the beginning of May. We're working on the details of the permit right now, and so just to let you know that that's in progress, and there's very serious consideration about an alternate route based upon public health and safety.
Thank you. Commissioner Shertliff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. For city manager Burton, thank you very much for the update. I know there's been a lot of talk online and, and in the news, but wanted to see you with regards to the meeting schedule. Do we know a timeline for these decisions and when they need to be made?
Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner, are you talking about like the three options?
Yeah, yes, please.
I would think that we will be bringing them forward, you know, within the next several weeks this spring. And, you know, it's part of, it's part of the realignment of our entire permitting process for special events, not only parades, but all other special events, and so we've been working with our strategic partners, and, and I think we still have a little more groundwork to lay with, with our partners relative to the three options that we'll bring forward for your consideration.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Anything further in your report, Mr. Burton?
Mayor Pro Tem, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Next up are our regular items, the first being the consideration of the allocation of funds from the former, oh, yes, thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry about that. The next item is actually communications from the Helena Citizens Council. Ms. Hammer, sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. My name is Diana Hammer. I'm the HCC District One Representative, Helena Citizens Council, and I have three items for you tonight. The first one, I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on the February twenty-six recommendation that the Helena Citizens Council passed unanimously regarding the La Grande Cannon Trail recommendation. This recommendation was developed in conjunction with the Helena Trails Alliance, and I'm responsible for bringing it to the HCC for its consideration, so I was just by coincidence scheduled to report to you tonight, so I thought I would elaborate a little bit. The recommendation respect, you've all received it, and the recommendation respectfully requests that the city vacate its right-of-way along La Grande Cannon Trail. This was the original intention during the land negotiations with the parties involved back in twenty twenty, and it was about five years ago, so we wanted to bring it to your attention again because case things, sometimes we forget about things, and it's important to this community where a lot of bikers and hikers and trails are important to us. And since we've submitted the recommendation to you last week, we've heard from the city manager that he has some concerns or some questions about the accuracy of the recommendation, and I'll speak for myself, but we take our recommendation seriously. We want to provide you thoughtful, well researched, well reasoned, and accurate recommendations for your consideration. So hearing that the city manager had some questions, I went back and reconfirmed with those, the folks involved in the initial negotiations that indeed our recommendation as written, as submitted, is accurate. So, so in addition, and one more piece of information that came up during our discussions that was not included in the recommendation, in addition to the unanimous support from the Citizens Council, the public is also supportive. Last fall, when the Prickly Pear Land Trust conducted its trail survey, there were over nine hundred, hundred respondents from our community. Hundred percent of them were in favor of vacating the right of, the city's right-of-way along the La Grande Cannon Trail and permanently protecting this land as originally intended. So we understand that there may be a meeting between HCC and city staff to provide more information to, maybe we can clear up whatever misunderstanding there is, and we look forward to that, and we hope to see it on your agenda in the near future. The second thing, HCC is working on its budget recommendations, pulling together our budget committee, and the HCC had a good meeting with the city manager last week to iron out how we can best move forward. And then the third thing, we'd like to thank Director Knopki for his time. We're putting together an open house on the twenty-fifth of March at the library to talk about transportation issues, which again is related to the support this committee shows for the trail system. So that's my report. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and attention.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hammer. Commissioners, any questions, discussion, comments? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Mr. Burton.
Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to clarify for the record that, you know, the HCC makes their recommendations, but in two thousand twenty, the county owned the right-of-way on La Grande Cannon, and it would have been impossible for us to commit to vacating a piece of property that we don't have control over. That's going to change in the future. There's the Westside Woods subdivision, which is also privately held, and when you look at vacation of property, and I've dealt with and met with the Prickly Pear Board of Directors, they understand that when the Westside Woods comes in with their final plat, that we will then have control, and there's parts of that road we'll never want to vacate because half of the road goes to the adjacent property owner, and why would we dedicate property to a private landowner when we want to maintain it in the public right-of-way? So there's more to this than some conversation that took place in the twenties, in twenty twenty, and working with Pam Bucy and others at the Prickly Pear Board of Directors, Dr. Ken Eden, our intent and has been repeatedly, and I know that you've heard this report, when we get the final plat for Westside Woods, then we'll have mostly full control of La Grande Cannon Boulevard. At that time, we will come forward with the commission to update the, the resolution that governs Mount Helena City Park, and we can make sure within that resolution that the, that the La Grande Cannon Boulevard is set aside as a walking path for the future. And there is absolutely no movement to change the use of the existing La Grande Cannon Boulevard from its present walking path use. So to do, to engage the public in a holistic way, when Westside Woods files their final plat, we then have control of that portion of the right-of-way, we'll engage the commission on the overall comprehensive update to the Mount Helena plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burton. Commissioners, any further? All right, thanks. So now to the regular items. Consider the allocation of funds from the former consolidated Central Helena Urban Renewal Area to a new project located within the boundaries of the former URA. Community Development Director, Mr. Brink.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members, members of the commission. Again, this is, as Mayor Pro Tem stated, consideration of the allocation of funds from what used to be considered the Consolidated Central Helena Urban Renewal Area to a new project within the same boundaries of that former URA. On number, on November seventh of last year, the Helena Symphony made a request of, of the mayor and the city commission for partial funding for fundraising feasibility study assessing the symphony's fundraising capacity for what we consider Project Ming, and that is the redevelopment of the Ming Opera House and the adjacent Light and Traction Building. According to the symphony representatives, who some are here present tonight, and I think Maestro Scott's probably online, and they can speak more specifically to the project itself, the funds will be used to contract and execute in a comprehensive fundraising feasibility study for the symphony specifically related to their Ming Opera House project. In twenty twenty-four, through a partnership with DEQ and EPA, Mosaic Architecture, Theater Projects, MBAC, and the Helena Symphony, the Shriners, and many other stakeholders that are too numerous to mention here, dynamic long-term vision for the historic Ming Opera House and the Helena Light and Traction Building was created. That was delivered in the form to the symphony as a preliminary architectural report and operational feasibility study. Excuse me. The symphony intends to contract the services of one of, one of several high-quality and experienced groups that conduct similar fundraising studies across the country, and this study will provide a clear picture of the fundraising capacity of the symphony and envision acquisition and revitalization and the next steps for the Ming project. Potential impact of Project Ming will be significant development of a historic property that will enhance the city of Helena with space for performances, not solely, their only performance space will continue to use Civic Center as Maestro Scott indicated. Creation of a third space for the community to share and utilize, and a location to house Helena artists. This project also supports the development and revitalization of Cruz Avenue by creating an entrance to the building on that, that thoroughfare. For seventy years, the symphony has served the Helena community through symphonic performances and educational programs that enrich the lives of community members. The mission of the symphony is to engage, enrich, transform, and inspire the lives through music. The downtown, the opportunity to acquire and revitalize the Ming Opera House in the heart of downtown Helena, becoming a performance art space and a hub for community engagement and events, as you all well know, will be transformative, transformational change to the landscape of Helena for decades to come. It is staff's recommendation that the commission approve a resolution for the allocation of funds in the amount of thirty-five thousand from the former consolidated Helena Urban Renewal Area and associated tax increment district to the Helena Symphony for a fundraiser, fundraising feasibility study. Wow, that's mouthful. I did want to point or note, I won't go through the, the bullet, bulleted items that I have relative to the various forms and, and iterations of the URAs for, for the downtown area that I went through with the, during the admin meeting, but I did want to point out that Mayor Pro Tem Logan asked last, last week relative to goals and objectives from the current plan or the current, current URA to, to former URAs, and while we did do that analysis as a staff, as we were formulating a recommendation for this project, I did want to point out and just highlight, we did that review. Unfortunately, I didn't provide it. I apologize, but that was part of our analysis. But I want to just kind of read some of the goals and objectives of the consolidated URA as well as the existing downtown, if you'll indulge me. So part of the URA or the, the plan for the consolidated district is projects must constitute an urban renewal project within the meaning of the Act and the Plan, and the Act being Montana Code annotated, and I'll just provide a definition of what a, what a, a urban renewal area is and what a URA, UR project is, and there are undertakings or objectives of a municipality in an urban renewal area for the elimination and for the prevention of the development or spread of blight. It may involve redevelopment in an urban renewal area, rehabilitation or conservation in a URA, or any combination or part of redevelopment, rehab, conserve, or conservation in accordance with the URA plan. Some of the goals from that consolidated URA, which I sent Sunset at, of course, as I spoke about last week, one of the goals, promote the area as the retail, commercial, financial, office, hotel, and convention, cultural, historic, and entertainment focal point for the Helena urban area. Stimulate private investment, including the rehabilitation of existing two main structures by providing physical and economic incentives for downtown development, protect and restore certain historic and architecturally significant buildings in order to preserve and promote the unique character and features of the area, and lastly, encourage the clustering of complementary activities and promote pleasant, diverse physical surroundings with an emphasis, emphasis on quality and overall urban design, and to create an atmosphere that will attract tourists while at the same time address the needs of the community. So those are some of the goals out of the consolidated URA plan, and I mentioned both of these in the, the resolution, so I wanted to bring it up too. The existing downtown urban renewal district plan, one of the goals, build a cohesive downtown identity, which this definitely will, without a doubt, add to downtown vibrancy with a mix of uses, invest in the public, excuse me, upgrade underperforming properties, which we feel this is, and promote historic preservation to create a quality and unique experience. So I just wanted to, to answer that question for the record relative to goals and objectives, that we did look at that when we did our analysis. I failed to, to provide that analysis in your, in your packet, but I'll turn it over to, if you'll allow me, to, to representatives of the, the symphony if you have project-related questions.
Certainly. Commissioners, any questions for Director Brink before he takes off?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I've had the opportunity to visit this property a couple of times, and just a comment real quick, and then a question. I, I'm, thank you for walking through the piece about the vibrancy and upgrading and historic preservation. I think that will do all three things, and a question about the URA. I know we reviewed this in our admin meeting, but for, I guess, education, this is not new, this is not new tax dollars, this is funds that have been carried over for some time now.
That's correct. Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Shertliff, yes. So these funds were part of a loan that were, that was provided to the Great Northern Project out of the tax increment financing out of the previous consolidated urban, consolidated urban renewal, urban renewal area. Through repayment of those funds, it's going into a, a protected account that can only be used, restricted account that can only be used for this purpose or for uses within the, the URA.
Commissioners, further?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Certainly.
I, I don't have additional questions, two comments. One, I'm very supportive of this project and, and plan to support it. Second comment, I understand that Commissioner Reed has made a request through the chair to table the item until a future meeting because she'd like to participate in additional conversation, and so in deference to her request, which, you know, other commissioners have made in the past, I'd be willing to make that motion after public comment when the time comes, but just wanted to note that I, I am supportive but want to be thoughtful of her request for an opportunity to discuss the project when she returns to the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Dean. So at this time, is there any public comment? Anyone wishing to comment on this agenda item, either in person or online? Ms. Claiborne, sorry, I haven't.
Mayor Pro Tem, I have no public comment online.
Okay, Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I think Maestro Scott, I can see him on the camera because he's a panelist, but I think he would like to make a comment.
Certainly.
May I be heard?
We can hear you, yes.
Great, great, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, just reiterating, thank you to Director Brink for the proposal. I think everything he said is just so accurate, and I just want to reiterate, as I did at the administrative meeting, that the symphony, this is not the first study, that I think it's important in this meeting, just to reiterate the fact that we have done multiple studies, including a fairly extensive preliminary architectural report, and then a sort of a secondary report of an operational pro forma, which shows us multiple things, particularly how could we operate this and so forth, and what it could be used for. And it was fascinating to hear what Director Brink said about what, what these funds need to be used for, because we, we check off nearly every one of those boxes, particularly development in the community, housing issues, and, and then bring development in the community, housing issues, and, and then bring other arts groups together. And it's taking two critically historic buildings, that when one looks at these buildings and the history of these buildings, to preserve them and to bring them back to life in a way. The Light and Traction Building, of course, would not be used to house generators for trolleys, but it would be used in another way that sort of brings back so much of the beauty of these buildings. And so there's historic preservation opportunities here if we decide to move forward with this. The final piece of this study is, where do we find the funds to pay for it? And we don't know the full price tag yet. There are some things in the press that were not quite accurate. And because we have multiple options of things, and we're still looking into all those. So right now, we just need to do the final study. It's worth noting that the previous two studies were funded by the state of Montana under the Jan Forte administration through DEQ, and they paid close to $100,000. So we've met with the city manager and his staff and talked about how could the city be partnering with us to help us make sure we do our due diligence to find out what the right direction is. So again, and as Director Brink said, we have no intention of leaving the Civic Center. That will still be our main performance home. This, this, these buildings would be used for so many other things.
Thank you, Maestro Scott. Ms. Clayborne, any further public commentary, or is there any, any further public comments in the chambers?
Mayor Protem, I have no further public comment online.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I can make that motion that would table the item until Commissioner Reed returns at a future meeting. So I would move to table the allocation of funds for, in the former consolidated Helena Urban Renewal Area to the Helena Symphony until a future scheduled meeting at the call of the city manager.
Second.
So we have a motion to table that's been seconded. Any, anything prior to our roll? Ms. Clayborne?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I think it's just important to note this is in deference to one of our commissioners who want an opportunity to participate in the discussion, and so it will come back for consideration.
Certainly. Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Dean.
Mr.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Protem, I'm in support of this as well, and in deference to our colleague who's not here tonight that was hoping to make some comments and questions. I'll be supporting this as well, but looking forward to that future meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Clayborne?
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Logan?
Aye.
The motion to table carries three to zero.
Our next regular item is to consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Stockman Financial Corporation for costs associated with demolition activities at 1020 North Last Chance Gulch. And here with us tonight is our senior planner, Ellie Ray. Ms. Ray, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and commissioners. I feel like Director Brink has already set the stage for the conversations for these two applications this evening by going over the goals of the downtown URD plan, so thank you for that. The first application before each night, as mentioned, is for Stockman Bank. As you might recall, in late January, you heard an application for funding for $6,650, which were, was to assist with the abatement activities of property located at 1020 North Last Chance Gulch, which is at the intersection with Lyndale. It's an old service station. So those abatement activities were funded with the TIF dollars that evening. And the second application that has come forward, we received in early February, and it is specifically for the actual physical demolition of that structure, but it will also help with excavating underneath the concrete slab foundation to get to the water service line so that they can freeze and cap it, because the service line extends somewhere out into the MDT right of way, as it happens. So this will prevent flooding of that site as they demolish the structure. So the total cost of this work for this present phase of demolition is $63,850. The request before you tonight is for 50% of those eligible project activities at $31,925. It's probably worth noting that so far, the pre-development costs that the bank has shouldered are over $2.1 million as of the time of the application in early February, so the request between January and now only is about 2% less than that of those pre-development costs that the bank has been paying so far. So with all of that stated, the motion before you tonight is to move to approve a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Stockman Financial Corporation for costs associated with demolition activities at 1020 North Last Chance Gulch. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have of me, and Steve Fawcett is also here on behalf of the bank.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Ray? Is there any public comment on this item? In chambers, we'll take first. Public comment. Ms. Clayborne, any online?
Mayor Protem, I have no public comment online.
Seeing none. Commissioners, any further prior to taking action? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move to approve a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Stockman Financial Corporation for the costs associated with demolition activities at 1020 North Last Chance Gulch.
Second.
So this motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Clayborne?
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Logan?
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Okay, and lastly, our, at least our last regular item, consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment funds, excuse me, to Stornella Squared LLC for historic facade improvements at 316 Fuller Avenue. Ms. Ray?
Thank you once again, Mayor Protem and commissioners. We received an application requesting distribution of downtown tax increment financing funds from Garrett Wenetta, who represents Stornella Squared LLC. They're the owner of the Tracy Block Building, not far from the Montana Club and the 300 block of Fuller Avenue. The block, the building in question dates back to the early 1900s. I like the fun history of these historic buildings, and this was originally a dental office, so fun Helena fact. But the building has some deferred maintenance with regard to the historic facade and is in need of funding to help with restoration of windows and the parapet coping. And so the total cost for those activities is $40,646. And Mr. Wenetta is requesting 50% of those eligible funds or costs be reimbursed with TIF in the amount of $20,323. So with that, the motion before you this evening for this application is to move to approve a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Stornella Squared LLC for historic facade improvements at 316 Fuller Avenue. I'm once again happy to answer questions that you may have of me, and Mr. Wenetta is present this evening, if you have questions of him as well.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments for Ms. Ray? Is there any public comment? We'll go with the, any in chambers, public comment? Any public comment in chambers? Ms. Clayborne, online? Do we have any public comment?
Mayor Protem, I have no public comment online.
Okay. Commissioners, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move to approve a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Stornella Squared LLC for historic facade improvements at 316 Fuller Avenue.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Ms. Clayborne?
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Logan?
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Well, we're at that time of the agenda where we'd entertain any public comment relative to items that are not on this agenda. Is there any public comment? Any online? Ms. Clayborne?
Mayor Protem, I have no public comment. Oh, I always speak too soon, I apologize.
We do have an individual in chambers. Sir, if you'd state your name and address, and, and our practice is typically to limit public comment to two minutes, so at that time, I'll ask you to wrap up. I won't take that long. Okay, thank you.
My name is Joel Gerhart. I live at 1719 Golden Street here in Helena, Montana. I am a member of the Helena Trails Alliance Steering Committee, and involved in a lot of trails, things around the city of Helena, have been for a very, very long time. And I just wanted to thank you for your support tonight of, you know, reiterating the city's commitment to eventually follow through at the right time and the right place to, you know, abandon the portions of La Grande Cannon that could be abandoned or reconfigure the right of way or whatever, but we do just want to say thank you. We appreciate that support. Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further? Last call, online?
Mayor Protem, I do have one hand raised. Nate Kop?
Mr. Kop, you have the floor.
And I also just wanted to follow up on the La Grande conversation, because the protection of the La Grande property and, and trail is one of the big reasons that PPLT protected that land in partnership with the community in 2020. And just wanted to echo what Joel Gerhart just said, that we're excited to see that protected permanently in whatever mechanism is best as soon as the city is able. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Clayborne, any others?
Mayor Protem, I have no other public comment online.
Thank you. Commissioners? All right.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Oh, Commissioner Dean?
Sorry, just really briefly, I wanted to report really quickly. I'm zooming in here from Washington DC at the National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference, which is our opportunity to meet with our counterparts around the country. We did have a lot of really great meetings today. One of the meetings that I was able to secure was with the Intergovernmental Liaison from the White House, where I had an opportunity to make our case as to why the US Department of Transportation should keep supporting our awarded rail crossing grade separation and RACE grant. The liaison was excited to hear about the project and made a commitment to help us get through the process towards an agreement. And then we'll have additional meetings with our congressional delegation on Wednesday to not just advocate for those projects that we've already been awarded, but ensuring that programs like the Community Development Block Grant and other important mechanisms that the city uses continue to be in the budget process. So some good news on that front, and excited to report more once we get those agreements finally signed from the US Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Commissioner Dean. Good. All right. Thank you all for your attendance and participation tonight. This meeting is adjourned.